Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, and establish a quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Here. Councilmember Laloie?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Gueda?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back from the summer recess. I hope everyone had got at least a little bit of rest. Members, we've got two items on the afternoon agenda, and then a closed session, and then we will meet again at five o'clock for the evening meeting. On today's calendar, we have two items. One is the City Auditor's 2021 Community Survey. Why don't we begin with that? I'll turn it over to our city auditor. Oh, we have to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I apologize. Let's all rise, those who can. I'll lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead. I will go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech. Thank you all very much. Okay, why don't we go right to discussion item one, which is the City Auditor's 2021 Community Survey, and turn it over to our City Auditor, Jorge Seguera. Jorge Seguera?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jorge Seguera, your City Auditor. With me today is Frishto Arari, who is responsible for overseeing our consultants on this survey. The recommendation that is before you is that you receive and file the City Auditor's 2021 City of Sacramento Community Survey. The community survey provides a comprehensive and accurate picture of community quality and residents' perspectives about local government services, policies, and management. This is now our third year performing the community survey. This report provides opinions of a representative sample of 785 city residents with a 95% confidence level and a 4% margin of error. In other words, there is a greater than 95% probability that the observations noted are real. The data was weighted to make the survey responses reflective of the larger population of the community. Characteristics used for weighing were age, sex, race, Hispanic origin, housing type, housing tenure, and council area. The results of the survey are available in PDF and are also on an online dashboard. The website is listed on the bottom of this slide. The survey was also made available to residents on the city's website for about two weeks, beginning on April 8, 2021. The city made great efforts to advertise the survey to residents, such as posting videos, reminders, and advertisements on Facebook and Instagram. A total of 2,172 responses were completed online. The online survey responses were reported separately as they were not part of a representative sample of city residents. Nonetheless, the results of the online survey were, for the most part, consistent with the results of the statistical survey and allowed a much larger number of residents to participate in the survey. The results of the open participation survey are included in the report and online dashboard. The community survey captures residents' opinions considering 10 central facets of the community. Those include safety, mobility, community design, education, arts, and culture, natural environment, inclusivity and engagement, as well as other areas like the economy, utilities, and parks and recs. Similar to the previous year's community surveys, safety and economy were rated as high in importance, however low in quality. Utilities, natural environment, and education and arts and culture were rated high in importance and also high in quality. Before we get into the results of the survey, I also wanted to note that this survey was conducted in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, residents' ratings may have changed over time, possibly due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The following charts and tables identify the percentage of residents that rated each question positively, such as excellent or good. Satisfaction in residents' quality of life has decreased slightly from the results of 2018 and 2019. The arrows above the data label on these charts indicate that the data identifies how the city compared with benchmark government agencies with populations of 400,000 to 1.5 million. Except for the satisfaction and the overall image or reputation of Sacramento, the results of other quality-of-life questions were similar to, which means within 10 percentage points, of the benchmark cities, those cities that are 400,000 to 1.5 million that participated in the survey. The overall image or reputation of Sacramento rated lower than the benchmark cities. Being rated as higher or lower than the benchmark means that Sacramento's average rating for a particular item was more than 10 percentage points than the benchmark. Ratings related to city governance have differed from previous years. Satisfaction increased in some questions and decreased in others. For example, residents' satisfaction with the overall customer service by Sacramento employees increased from 45% in 2018 to 57% in 2021. However, residents' satisfaction in the overall direction that Sacramento is taking decreased from 50% in 2018 to 40% in 2021. The results of the listed governance questions were similar to the benchmark cities with populations over 400,000, except treating all residents fairly, which was rated lower than the benchmark cities. This figure shows some of the questions related to the economy. Positive ratings for the overall economic health of Sacramento decreased from 47% in 2018 to 41% in 2021. In addition, the shopping opportunities, cost of living in Sacramento, and economic development all decreased in 2021. As previously stated, some of these decreases may be due to COVID-19 pandemic. Sacramento as a place to visit and shopping opportunities both rated lower than benchmark government organizations with populations greater than 400,000. The other questions displayed here rated similar to the benchmark organizations. This table identifies the percentage of residents that rated these categories related to mobility. Positive ratings for overall quality of the transportation system decreased from 61% in 2018 to 38% in 2021. In addition, positive ratings for the quality of sidewalk maintenance increased from 35% in 2018 to 41% in 2021. This table identifies the percentage of residents that provided positive ratings to questions related to community design. As shown in this table, some of the questions were new in 2021. Therefore, there were no results from previous years or benchmark cities. Positive ratings for respondents' neighborhoods as a place to live decreased from 75% in 2018 to 68% in 2021. In addition, positive ratings for the overall quality of new development in Sacramento decreased from 53% in 2018 to 39% in 2021. This figure identifies the percentage of respondents that rated questions about utilities positively. As shown here, we had a couple of new questions added to the survey this year. Positive ratings for garbage collection decreased, but drinking water increased. In addition, the city appears to have rated similar to the benchmark entities. Positive ratings related to residents' perception of safety in the city decreased in most of the categories from the ratings in 2018. The overall feeling of safety in Sacramento and quality of Sacramento police services decreased from 2018 and were lower than the benchmark entities. The quality of emergency preparedness increased from 2018, but is still lower than benchmark entities. Positive ratings for some of the questions related to the natural environment, such as cleanliness of Sacramento or quality of recycling and the quality of yard waste, also decreased. Positive ratings for many of the questions related to parks and rec also decreased from 2018. Positive ratings for the fitness opportunities, recreational opportunities, quality of city parks, quality of recreation programs or classes, and quality of centers, facilities, all decreased in 2021. This is most likely attributed to COVID-19 pandemic shutdowns as many of these opportunities were not available during the pandemic. This figure identifies some of the questions related to health and wellness. As shown in the figure above, the responses were similar to other benchmark cities and counties with populations greater than 400,000. Positive ratings for most of the questions related to education, arts, and culture also decreased in 2021 compared to 2018, but were similar to benchmark cities in counties. The positive ratings for some questions regarding inclusivity and engagement were similar to 2018 responses, while others decreased, most likely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For example, opportunities to participate in social events and activities and opportunities to participate in community matters both decreased in 2018. Residents' participation levels also decreased from 2018. A new question was added this year regarding whether survey respondents voted in the most recent election. 82% of survey respondents indicated that they had voted in the most recent election. We worked with the city's Measure U Committee to add some custom questions regarding Measure U to this year's survey. As shown in the figure here, 50% of survey respondents were not familiar with Measure U. Respondents were asked to indicate their level of support for using Measure U funds for specific city programs and services. This table identifies respondents' level of support in order of highest support to lowest. More than 90% of respondents supported using Measure U funds for community-based mental health and wellness, while 65% of respondents supported using Measure U funds for essential public safety services like police. When asked how respondents would be likely they would be to complete a survey or participate in meetings to help decide how Measure U funds are to be spent, 66% indicated they were very likely or somewhat likely to participate. Although there are some trends that indicate residents' satisfaction ratings have decreased in some areas due to the uniqueness of the current pandemic, it might not be indicative of a sustained trend. However, it is important to continue to monitor these trends in subsequent years to assess this matter. Consistent with prior years, safety and economy continue to be key areas of highest importance to the community and continued investment in these areas would be consistent with the priorities expressed by our residents. The entire 2021 community survey provides responses to additional questions that were asked. In addition, the results of the survey were also analyzed by various demographics. For the full survey results and additional analysis, see the 2021 survey report online or on our website. We would like to thank the city council offices, the city manager's office, and the public information officers for their support and assistance in getting the word out on this year's survey. I'm available to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right. Do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I do not have anyone's hands raised for this agenda item.
Okay, I'm sorry, no one's hands raised. Now, Madam Clerk, maybe you can explain the new system of public testimony while we're still on Zoom here, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd appreciate that. So for the attendees in the Zoom, if you want to speak on an agenda item, once that item starts, you'll raise your hand. So if you're online, you can click that by raising the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. On the mobile app, you'll click Raise Hand on the More tab. And if you're on the telephone to raise your hand, you do star nine. And it looks like I have one person who has raised their hand. It's Sophia Neal.
Welcome. We see you right in the middle of the screen there. You can unmute yourself.
Sophia Neal, it's your turn to speak.
Ask to unmute. Okay. There you are. You're on.
Okay. Okay, great. If it's okay, I would like to say something about Measure U.
Please.
Okay, so I have, I was living in the Otomus area, and I have, well, I have two sets of twins. But one set, one's autistic and one wasn't. And they had a program at, is it South Natomas Park? Where, it was a summer program. It was for the whole summer, and it was supported by Measure U. And I was just sitting here thinking like how awesome that was because my daughter, who's autistic, she was able to participate with non-autistic kids going on field trips. We went, we did some amazing things. And on the back of everybody's shirt said, "Paid for by Measure U." And that's my testimony.
Wow.
It was amazing.
Wow.
And they did it for years. It was probably about five years straight. So everybody was able to build a relationship with my daughter Kayla, which probably wouldn't have had an opportunity like that if it wasn't for, it was, I mean, we did some great things. We went to Six Flags. We went to Great America, San Francisco. It was amazing.
Well, we're really glad to hear, you know, some positive feedback. Of course, we're happy to hear the criticisms as well. That comes with the job and the territory. I will just say, you know, it strikes me from the survey, the City Auditor's survey, that not everybody knows in the city about Measure U. In fact, only 12% of the people are very familiar, another 38% somewhat familiar. Well, Measure U is now a full cent increase in the sales tax. And the second half cent has not only saved our state budget from having to make cuts, as we've reported out over these last couple of months. The city council has invested $119 million from Measure U and the general fund alone in youth, in affordable housing, in workforce development, in helping small businesses, and a whole wide range of important things under the umbrella of inclusive economic development. And we're going to continue that trend the best that we can. And your testimony, I think, is very revealing about why those investments are so important. So thank you. I don't see any council members. I was just gonna, I guess I had one other comment.
Mayor, I do have a comment. I have my hand raised.
All right, okay. I'm sorry. I've not seen it here. Can I, let me just finish, and I'll turn it right over to you, okay?
Sure.
I was just gonna say that the one conclusion that threw me a little bit, Mr. Seguera, was what you said at the very end, which is that the survey cries out for more investment in public safety. And I get that. I see it. But when I look at page 36 of the survey and look at the polling numbers, the numbers are equally strong, if not stronger, for the public's demand for mental health and wellness, response workers, affordable housing, homeless supportive services, youth parks, community enrichment, and libraries. And so maybe you could clarify a little bit your conclusion because you talked about public safety and traditional public safety, but you didn't mention the high 80s, as I see it, high 80s, and in one instance, the 90s in terms of the percentage of support for more investment in these other areas.
I think you're reading the information exactly correct. What I was trying to highlight is the community's importance in safety, like community safety, feeling safe in their community overall, not necessarily public safety. One of the things that we actually highlighted in the results is that when you look at public safety, and in particular, police, the community satisfaction in that particular area has actually been decreasing. So what I was alluding to in my conclusion was that continuing to invest in things that enhance the public's feeling of safety, which can be addressed in a variety of different ways, is something that is important to our community so that they feel safe and comfortable, you know, recreating and, you know, buying things within our community and being able to be out there.
Appreciate the clarity. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Thanks. Thank you, Jorge. Just a couple of comments or questions. One is on timing. And how set are we on the timing of the survey? Because this information would be valuable as we work on our budget, which obviously we've just finished and are in month one of our new fiscal year. So is there a way in the future that we can do this and get results as we're doing our budget process?
Yeah, well, we have to move it up a little bit further. And we are not set on a particular timeline. So if we had a target time for when you would want the results, we could work then backwards from that point to identify at what point we would have to issue the survey to be able to get the results within that timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, to me, and I would defer to the Budget Committee and the mayor on this, but, you know, having the results of this in early May or even late April as we're starting the budget process or working through the budget process, it would be a lot more useful. At this point, we're done for, you know, the next 11 months, and then we start over again. So that would be one thing. The second thing is, I mean, I appreciated 187 pages of data. It's always interesting and good. I guess what I would appreciate, and I felt this way a little bit when we talked about some of the race inequity questions and that you had brought a few weeks ago or a few months ago, whatever that was, is a little bit more analysis of what's important here and what you see. And, you know, how does this relate to the budget? How does this relate to policies that we're either considering or that we have passed? I just, at this point, to me, a lot of this work sits outside of our processes that we use to run the city. And I think this is really useful information, but having you and your staff call through it some more, so it's more directed on the results would be really helpful.
Okay. That's good feedback.
Okay. Very good. Are any other members? I do see, I see Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, Councilman Harris, and Councilmember Laloie. Go ahead.
Mayor? Jorge, first of all, kind of hard to hear you. So that mic is maybe a little too far away from here. Yeah, sorry, I would have chimed in sooner, but we could hear you, just not well. I really appreciate that you included this year the breakdown by district at the end, in the last sort of, well, I guess it's not the last, but in the pages, there's like several pages of all of these questions broken down percentage-wise, giving us the ability to look at how people feel differently based on where they live in the city. I think this is really important because when we're talking about trying to create equal opportunities across the city, and you ask a question like, do you feel safe in your community? It's great to have an overall answer, but it's a starkly different answer based on which part of the community you're asking, as well as access to fitness or food or, you know, whatever. And when you look at these, like, there are some things that are completely out of our control, like education, for example. There's a 20-point swing on that one. That's because they don't have the same school districts, right? So they're having very different experiences academically for their children based on school districts. That is not within the control of the city council, but it is really an important thing for us to understand when we're pouring into, you know, our Parks Department, for example, for youth programming, or knowing where we can fill gaps that school districts aren't. For example, on the digital equity stuff that I've worked on and that Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela joined to be working on when they got here, one school district gave laptops to everybody. That wasn't true in every school district. One school district made sure that all the kids had internet access, but not all of them could do that. So we had really tremendous inequity there. So I find that section to be really important for us to understand. And, you know, just like, also, it's not like, you know, there are other disparities. For example, if you look at my district, a lot of people feel like there's infrastructure needs because it's a new area. So there are certain things they don't have that other communities have because they're more established. Or there might be other communities that, you know, don't have access to shopping as much, right? And Council District 7 and 1 have a lot in common about the way people feel about their city, but it is starkly different from how people feel in different districts. And I also find it fascinating. We asked a lot of questions about how people feel about downtown. And I find it fascinating how the people who don't live in downtown feel about downtown versus the people who do live in downtown. Starkly different how they feel about that downtown experience versus the people who actually stay there, who seem to be more accustomed to it, feel a little bit more comfortable. When you ask the people in the other districts how they feel about going downtown, it's very different. So these are, from a policy standpoint, I think this is just fascinating for us and something that I would, Jorge, really love for you. First of all, to answer if you saw anything starkly different from district to district or community to community versus what you have told us in this report. And in the future, when you give this report in future years, I think it would be helpful for this council, because it is a long report, to maybe identify a few areas where you noticed a really big discrepancy in the quality of life or the type of experience or the safety or the economic, you know, perception of a community based on the council district. So does that make sense? You understand what I'm asking you?
Yeah. Yeah.
And anecdotally, do you have anything you noticed in this particular one that you could share with us? And then that's it.
Nothing comes to mind off the top of my head because I didn't dive into the specific details council by, council district by council district. The one thing that I would add, you know, because I think I've heard it from a couple of council members so far is that it is a little overwhelming to have 180 pages of, you know, this information. But we find that there's a lot of value in being able to see this detail from many different perspectives, and therefore it increases the volume because you're seeing the same information just cut a little bit differently.
Jorge, I won't, I won't speak for the other members, but for me, I want all that information. I just also want your analysis on some of it in addition so that there's more meat to the executive summary.
Sure. And maybe we can highlight some of the things that stand out to us that may warrant some initial, additional discussion or consideration, I think is what I'm hearing from you.
I think that's great. I think that's right. Because then that can drive dialogue about investment around corridors or bike lanes or whatever. So thank you.
And the one additional thing I was going to point out is that since we also made it available now online through Tableau, you can navigate through the different parts of the report a little easier than through 180-page PDF or printout of the document for those that are more comfortable with kind of an online navigation of the different tabs, and you can kind of focus in on the particular areas of interest. Thank you, though.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you for telling me. Appreciate it. Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jorge, you know, I appreciate the survey, but it kind of gives indications, but not really specific information in some ways to drill down. I agree with the comments of my colleagues. I think they were very astute. One is that we should be able to use this document to make economic decisions. So thank you for that, Jay. To me, that's really why this is useful, you know, because that's the way we make our city better is by allocating funds where they're really needed, and we're trying to meet the needs of our constituents. So we need this survey to help guide us in that direction. So I do believe the timing is correct. But also, I think geography is also very telling. For instance, you know, community safety, I agree with you, is really high on people's minds, certainly in the pandemic times. You know, are people, do people feel safe downtown and why? Do people feel safe on the American River Parkway and why? So it's hard to get that kind of detailed information out of this survey. But these are the kind of things that people email to me about regularly. Specifically, Parkway safety is a big concern, certainly in District 3. And, you know, our district is bisected by the Parkway, but the Parkway serves our entire city and our entire region. So to me, that's a very big concern. And our downtown, of course, is our economic engine. And it's very important to understand, you know, specifically the feeling of community safety in those kinds of areas. You know, it's a good piece of work. Maybe we could have a discussion. I'll formulate some ideas. Maybe we could have a discussion. I'll formulate some ideas about the results that I would like to have to to help guide us in in how we manage our budget and see if we can drill down a little deeper to get more specific information out of the survey. But it's a great piece of work and there are a lot of indicators here. I I think we can make it a little bit more refined and a little bit more specific. And I would imagine I know that you've asked for that kind of feedback in the past. I I think this is a good opportunity for all of my colleagues to think about what is the result that I really want from this survey to make it useful for me in my district? And for the city generally, and maybe we can provide you more feedback to guide the questions for the next survey.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Anyway, thank you to you and Farishta for for the hard work on this. It is helpful.
No problem. And and I'd just like to mention that there is the opportunity to integrate custom questions. So if you do identify a particular area of interest that we want to design questions for to get at some of the things that you're curious about and survey the community, we're happy to integrate it into that as we did for Measure U this this year.
Well, thank you for that. I think you're going to expect from me some questions about the American River Parkway.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Laloie, then Jennings and Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And Jorge, thank you so much for that report. Quite lengthy, but very informative. So I really appreciate it. I was I was praying that the mayor is not going to test us on the report coming back from recess. And I'm glad that he didn't. But I agree with everything my colleagues have stated. The the biggest thing right now that I'm seeing within our within our city is that even though we think some districts are alike, but in reality, some of our districts are completely different, right? So if I'm representing District Two, you know, my residents want more police, more presence. You go to my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, her district, they want less police and less presence. So I I think in order for us to be able to make some decision, if we can have some, maybe a shorter survey per district, so we can kind of review them and then collectively put them together, that would be great. But I I thought the report was phenomenal. A lot of hard work went to it. So I want to thank you and and the members of your office. But I would love to see more of a district by district. And maybe here's a fifty questions and let's see how each district answers it. So when we come back together, we can discuss about issues individually for the district and as a city as a whole. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Laloie, that that information is detailed in there by district. And I'd love to sit down with you if there's particular areas that you have questions on regarding how those differed across districts that we can discuss in further detail. And and that way we can maybe identify what some of those areas to highlight the next time around in terms of individual results would be. The only other thing I would add is one of the complications in doing this survey work district by district is that in some council council districts, it's very hard to get a representative sample that's statistically significant to participate out of a council district. So that the results can be reliable. And that's why we have a ninety-five percent confidence level for the entire results for the overall city. But when you get down to a council district by council district results basis, our confidence level drops significantly because we have much fewer participants out of a particular area. So that's the only caveat that I would put in in regards to the results district by district.
And I greatly appreciate for you bringing that up. And that was one of my concerns, that when you get a ninety-five percent, let's say, approval, and not knowing from this X amount of number of surveys that we got, what percentage is coming from where? And it might just create a little bit of a is this about my district? Is it about the city? Because as I said, there's a big difference between D two and D four. You know, a huge difference. They have certain needs that we don't. We got some needs that, you know, they don't have any concern about. So those are the little things that it would be great. And I think if I if I understood my colleague, Councilmember Ashley, do we I think, you know, a little conclusion from your experience and your expertise to kind of show that the top ten elements where we're headed as a summary, are we doing it? Is it working good? Are we failing? That would be awesome, too. Because when I'm looking at two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one, I don't know if as as a council, we've done a great job. Or at the council, we've done a horrible job and because those in two twenty twenty-one, our numbers are dropping, going down. So we blame it on pandemic, obviously. That that was the cause of it.
Well, and the other thing that's of value here is that, you know, the numbers tell you one aspect of it. But that's why we also compare ourselves to other communities across the country so that it puts it in context. And the really critical component to keep in mind when looking at these numbers is that for many of the categories where we're inquiring and getting results from, we're actually performing similar to our counterparts across the country. And and so even if it's not rated as positively as you would have anticipated, you have to also look at how it compared when we look at other communities like ours rating that same area. And so where where I think probably more work and inquiry would be warranted is where we start to deviate significantly from our benchmark entities.
Okay, thank you. We've got I'm having some screen problems here. I don't know if it's this new system or whatever, but I know Councilmember Valenzuela has asked to speak and I see Councilmember Geta, Shanier, and my Vang. So, Madam Clerk, I'm not sure what order all that was in, but you can you can help me so that I'm not playing favorites here.
Your order is Valenzuela, Jennings, Geta, Shanier, and then Vang.
Yeah, okay, good. I forgot Rick. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo Jorge the compliments on the survey. I really appreciated meeting with you about this after I first came into office. And I want to say while I echo Vice Commissioner Shanier's interest in seeing this before the budget, I really appreciate that you worked with the Measure U Committee on these questions because I find this to be really illuminating a new level of detail than I've seen in previous surveys, which is really exciting. And I think that partnership was really fruitful and hope to see it again next time, although obviously a little bit earlier is always always better. And I also want to appreciate Vice Mayor Protim Ashby's comments about the district breakdown. I really think these surveys aren't meant to like to be a replacement for community engagement, but more of a pulse check. And this really aligns well with what I've been hearing from my community, particularly with safety, as the mayor was talking about, and that broader definition of community-based, prevention-based, programming-based, safety that will really help prevent crimes and calls for help to nine-one-one. I do want to call out specifically because the most dramatic drop I saw, Jorge, was with regard to transportation mobility. Then it went from sixty-one percent to thirty-eight percent. And what struck me was that, like, the sub-indicators that you ask people about actually stayed pretty consistent. And so it feels like we missed something. And like, maybe we didn't ask a question that we could have asked. And so I'd love to hear your thoughts about how we figure out what that is. I have theories. They might have something to do with shared mobility, but I've got theories about why that number is changing and would love to hear your thoughts about how we could try to tackle and figure out what was going on there. And then the second thing that struck me was the inclusivity engagement indicators, because those are really low and and they're going down. And obviously, some of those were due to the pandemic because folks were isolated from community events and and resources. But others, like the openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds would really demand, in my mind, some sort of action step that we would want to take because having a number that low and a category like that just strikes me as as an opportunity to try to figure something out. So I wonder if you have thoughts on how we would proceed with those two specific buckets of outcomes we got.
I think those are excellent questions and thank you for bringing those up. At this point, you know, I think we would have to dig into how that particular overall result was determined to give you an adequate response. And so I would like to come back to you with some additional information related to specifically what you're requesting. But I think the 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 point that you raise and and I think it's a good one, is the importance of identifying where these key indicators really stand out to the variety of different council members from their different perspectives so that we can pinpoint which indicators are critical to your particular community's interests. And then, you know, drill down and maybe inquire further as to what may be causing such a trend or whether or not you know, there is an opportunity to try to actively try to curb that trend in the near future. And and that's what I'm hoping this type of work stimulates in terms of the council members and our community and management is identifying where those opportunities are so that we can then plan and strategize as to what can be done going forward to change that curve.
I appreciate that. And yeah, I would love to see like some sort of metric come out of this where it's like we have certain goals for for what we're trying to improve moving forward. That could really be almost like a strategy or a plan of like, okay, between now and our next survey, like, I really hope that inclusivity engagement number has changed coming out of the pandemic. But if it hasn't, I really want to know. And and that's not just on your department. That would also be like on me and and their expertise and and other departments to really work through an idea who are experts in this, but would love to see this operationalized in some way and your thoughts moving forward. Obviously, not right now because I don't want to put you totally on the spot, but thinking about like, how do we take this and use this in some sort of like accountability, for lack of a better way, for us really thinking about how we're making things better for folks. But um, thank you for this and appreciate your time as always.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to join my colleagues in in just the whole timing aspect of it. I'm beginning, I'm I'm looking at this, Jorge, from the standpoint of timing before the questions go out and our ability to add questions to it and for us this to be able to affect the budget. And so if we have the ability to customize, that is excellent because I don't think many of us knew that. And looking for the opportunity when we do this again to really shake the future of Sacramento by adding some questions that we think are important in our districts and in the overall city of Sacramento. And so I think my my question is, now that we've got this one hundred and eighty-seven page report and we know what we know, what can we tell the community are the next steps of what's going to happen as a result of the information that we have?
I think as we were discussing with Councilmember Valenzuela, the key is to identify those key areas related to either your council district or the city overall that we want to drill down into and to further detail and then strategize as to what are some of the things that the city could potentially do to either get better information out to the community, to inform them better about, you know, some of the services that the city are providing that they may just not have awareness about. Or make changes to the actual programs to enhance the type of service that that we're providing. You know, obviously, when it comes to things that are a little bit more tangible, like roads and the quality of our roads, you know, people can see and feel the quality of our roads and that would require an investment in, you know, upgrading and resurfacing our streets. And so to, if you want to improve that particular rating, you know, the the answer to change that is a little little easier, but difficult in terms of raising funds to pay for it. But things that are a little bit harder, like, you know, overall feeling of safety in your community, you know, that could be multifaceted. And so that might require a little bit more thought and community engagement to identify what might make a difference for that particular area.
And and so, Mayor, I think for me, the the next step question maybe is more directed towards us as a council as far as our workshops or community engagement, whatever way we're going to do it. But the timing of it between now and the next survey, you know, what are we going to do to shape the future of Sacramento based on what we know from this survey? And and I go back to the other surveys. What did we do from those surveys that helped us to shape the future of Sacramento? And should we have done more? Should we have planned to do more? How are we going to do it on a district level and also on a city level? So that I think we get more people participating in these surveys because they see the action as a result of getting this information.
I know in prior years, this information has been available when we've made decisions about like the federal funding that we've received and other major investments that the city has been pursuing.
So Jorge, I I want to just say, what you're hearing from the City Council here is that the timing of, we want to make sure that we're doing the timing of this important work in a more strategic way. That it it needs it needs to be tied to something. And maybe it is at the beginning of the budget process or when we do have another funding cycle from Federal Relief Act or state budget relief. That this is this work is too important to be untethered to something that is that is strategic. And I think what the council is urging you and us, frankly, because it's not just you, is to think through how we can use this as a vital tool as we make whatever decisions we're called upon to make.
Okay.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Geta next, I believe, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was going to be my point is continuing continuing on that part. What I I appreciated in this is that you identified that it's hard to hard to disaggregate some of this because our council districts are a bit gerrymandered. And so, you know, you can't really kind of gauge, you know, all the council districts and and those who live in that area. So I what I liked is that we started collecting and asking the question of income. And so as we do our racial equity work here and look at funding through an equity lens, I'd like to for us to to look at it from, I think, a household income level and and how people self-identify to see who we're actually serving in that level of satisfaction. You know, for, you know, one thing I noticed in in my council district was that access to childcare is is one on the lowest access points. And we've known that every time. That's why we're looking at trying to create more opportunities for more centers for childcare in the area. But it's different challenges for those in different income levels to get that access to childcare. So I I think that one tool that could help us, and Jorge, I'd like to work with you on this, is is figure out how we link a citywide, our, you know, both our household income and self-identification of families of of how we're best serving them and how they feel responsive. How they feel the city is responding to their needs as well. I think that'll be an important tool for both budget and audit. And to echo the timing, I think the timing in early April, helping us as we draft a vision, I'll give you some questions and and making sure that that survey goes out at a good time. So, thank you. Great work again and great work, Farishta. I think this is amazing, amazing work.
Okay, I've got Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I will keep my comments short because I didn't beat my colleagues to the the button. I had to log off and log back on. But first, Jorge, thank you so much for your work on this. I think I echo a lot of my colleagues on the timing of the survey. And I think it would go really well having this information before we make budget decisions. But I think, you know, having this information is still key because we are going to be discussing about how to allocate the dollars from the American Rescue Plan. We do have mid-year budget earlier in the year. And so this information is still really critical. And so just want to say thank you for that. And really looking forward to us shifting just the timing of the survey. I do I do have some some questions and comments and wanted to know, I did take a look at the survey. I wanted to know, because I know all of the rating is just for the overall participants. And I know we may have to take a deeper dive, but I'm just curious if you had an opportunity to look at the response for these same questions, but based on race or sexual orientation and identity, and even if based on gender as well. And I asked that because I just wonder if response would vary based on those identities so that we could play pay close attention to just how specific populations are feeling within the city. I know this is like overall of all the participant, but I think that would also give us as 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 decision makers, kind of kind of understanding where different subgroups are feeling about the city. That's my first question. If you had a chance to to do that, a deeper dive, and if not, I would be interested and in seeing, you know, when we look at the the sexual orientation or gender identity or race of how Or gender identity or race of how folks are rating the city.
Um, and that is one of the benefits of having uh, used Tableau this time around. Is that we have some of that stuff readily available. Uh, if I can share my screen for just a brief second. Um, I could show you that if you go to the Tableau page, you know, all the different categories that we talked about are listed as tabs. Uh, but one is called comparison. And here, uh, right now I'm showing the different questions by council district. And you can see how that changes. Oh, it's resetting, sorry. Uh, across the board. But in addition to that. You can also do this comparison by age.
Oh, perfect.
And so you could see in the group of eighteen to thirty four, how they responded to those same exact questions. Then thirty five to fifty four and so on and so forth.
That's great.
Do it by sex. So you could see male and female, how those those respond. Um, and you know, all of these other uh, area uh, categories as well. I had it on council district before. Um, but you know, there's a lot of different options here. You could look at housing type. So if you were curious, those that are in attached versus detached. Um, or uh, length of residency in Sacramento. So those people that are newly moved in versus those have been in Sacramento for some time. It breaks up the information from a variety of different perspectives. So I hope that's useful for you. And if you have any additional questions, once you've had an opportunity to kind of pour through that, happy to talk about it further.
Yeah, thanks, Jorge. I really appreciate that. Definitely will make sure that I do that because definitely want to see the comparison based on identity. The other, um, I think something that really stood out for me as well was one of the questions of. How Sacramento is feeling about us as a government taking care of our most vulnerable community. And twenty six percent rated excellent or good, which says to me that about seventy four or so percent of folks who did this um, survey. Um, they don't feel that we're doing a pretty good job at taking care of our most vulnerable residents. And I really wanted to pull that piece out, uh, because I think that's really troubling and glaring, right? We we represent the city and if our residents are feeling that we are not meeting the needs of our most vulnerable residents, that's a call to action. Um, and so I just wanted to point that out, Mayor. Um, that was probably the the main stat that I looked at. Because I always say, you know, as a city, we are only doing as good as our most um, our most vulnerable community. Um, and if this city is feeling like we're not doing that, um, I think it is a call to action on this council. And make sure that we do, uh, we do do that. So just wanted to say that. And Jorge, thank you so much for your work. Um, I do have several questions, several more questions, but I think we'll do, just schedule a meeting with you in particular. To do a little, a little bit more deeper dive uh, in the data. So thanks, thanks so much for your work.
Thank you.
It is no, no question. It is a call to action, Councilmember Vang. I I completely agree with you. It it's. It is interesting, may may, and maybe not, certainly not dispositive to compare. That rating with the way that people in Sacramento feel about the federal government. Our ratings were higher as I, as I see. But still, I mean, I think it speaks to the state of mind that people are in. Um, which is their lives, lives are hard right now.
Yeah.
We were in the midst of the pandemic, um, as this survey was taken. We're still in the, we're still just coming out of it and some fear that we may in fact be going back. And but for us, no excuses, it just means we have to do even more and do even better. To deliver for the people. I agree. Uh, Vice Mayor Chenier.
Yeah, just a thank you, Mayor. Quick comment on this. Um, I want, I want to put two other things on the table as we think about this. One is uh, all the budget performance metrics the city does and the other is all the work that Daniel Sanchez does. When we did the budget, I had asked if we could task the budget and audit committee with looking at the entire budget process. And so if there's direction to be provided. Um, or request back to the budget audit committee and the city manager, it's how do we take those three data sets? And how do we expand the budget process to really be able to utilize all of the data that we're mining? It's all important. Um, so it's real data and also survey data. But how do we use those three data sets as we do next year's budget and make this really worthwhile? That's it.
Okay, great discussion and again, great work. Um, great work. Let's uh, take this information and let's do something with it. Thank you. All right, we now move to the second discussion item uh, of the day, which is um. The report on the state of our Sacramento business community. And what the city can be doing more and better to assist our businesses coming out of the pandemic. I want to thank Vice Mayor Chenier for taking the mantle here. And uh, he and his staff for spending hours and hours of time organizing the process. Holding a series of community meetings with various leaders and sectors of the business community. Get their input and then to put together a report that. I believe has the potential to guide us uh, when it comes to our upcoming American Rescue Plan discussion. That we are going to begin in earnest at the beginning of next month. So Vice Mayor Chenier, I want to thank you and turn it over to you to introduce the item.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And and I'll I'll try to be quick on this and then turn it over to Scott Scifax. So like every, every other uh, group, the business community has certainly suffered. And when you look downtown, when you look at our corridors, when you look anywhere, uh, this has been a tremendously difficult year. And with the idea that those who know best are those who are most impacted by our policies, programs and budgeting. Uh, we should get their input as we think about how to spend our dollars. Because the budget is really a policy document if used correctly. So what we tried to do was emulate a little bit of what we did around the youth programming, which was bring those together who are who are most impacted. We had really two goals. One was short term and one was medium to long term. The short term goal was again, getting recommendations from the business community as we open up the economy here. What, how can we best spend our dollars and and really focusing on on the American Rescue Plan dollars? In the medium to long term, it's really about getting better engagement and and a better relationship between the business community and the city. So it's not just a one off, here's how we should spend X amount of dollars. But really about thinking about how we relate to each other, how the business community can have a voice along with everyone else. In the city as as we move forward. Um, without jobs, homelessness grows, without jobs, housing is more difficult, all of those things. So we really need to uh, thank the business community again for for coming together. We had over a hundred individuals attend four sessions where we talked about the downtown core. We talked about clean and safe. We talked about corridors. Um, and what do we do today with some of these dollars to to uh, move forward? I look at our, how we spend money on the business community as two phases. One, you're going to see today about eight and a half to nine million dollars worth of potential expenditures. Um, that we can take out of ARP and do that immediately. And uh, at the end of our session, Mayor, I hope I can come back and do some direction. Um, phase two really is thinking about more long term investments. Um, how do we want to uh, do an investment potentially in a one stop job center at Aggie Square? That we've been talking about with many folks. Um, how do we, do we do an accelerator project as I've done in other places? How do we really invest in our businesses so that we can expand the number of jobs? Um, so what I did uh, is really went to one of the smarter people I know, Scott Scifax. And said, will you help us think through this and will you help facilitate these sessions? Because I didn't think it would should be a city person that did it, but having someone who is a business person, who who knows uh, the lay of the land. Who really cares deeply about the city and ask Scott to donate some of his time uh, to doing this. Um, we also worked with the Economic Development Department. Uh, so thanks to Mike Jasso and Leslie Pritchy and Denise um, for helping out along the way. And certainly my staff, Allison um, and Claudia and Hillary and Jasleen and Ulysses for helping set up. So overall, we had three sessions of working sessions around different topics. And then a fourth session where we came back and prioritized. Um, so with that, uh, I want to turn it over to Scott Scifax, who's going to talk about what we learned and the results and recommendations that were developed. Scott.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Chenier. Uh, Mayor, members of the city council, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity. To share what I I think is really a process. And a set of recommendations that really represent the best of our community. Not only in how it came together, but but how it it was done. Uh, this uh, this afternoon, we're going to talk a little bit about these recommendations, really for your consideration. On how in your leadership and decision making that's coming up in the next few weeks. How you're going to allocate the proceeds. Um, that are coming to the city from federal recovery funds. And these funds can not only support a a return to the uh, on the rise vibrant Sacramento business community. That existed prior to the pandemic, but really lay the foundation, in the words of our president. For supporting our business community and building back better. And improving the prospects for Sacramento to move toward a more inclusive, more robust prosperity for its citizens. So we're going to quickly walk through a set of learnings on what the community, and that's both the neighborhoods as well as downtown. Deemed as important and relevant in their pursuit of restoring their businesses. And maximizing employment opportunity for workers that we all know are the lifeblood for so much of our economic vitality. Before we begin, uh, I, uh, could we move to the next slide? I think a couple of acknowledgements are in order. First, I I want to acknowledge the time and contribution of Vice Mayor Jay Chenier's uh, role in this process. He and his staff have worked tirelessly in organizing and supporting the process that leads us here today. And for the record, I just want to say this in level setting this conversation. The recommendations that you're going to see are not Councilman Chenier's recommendations. To say so would be to diminish the voices, the input, the time and participations. Of committed Sacramentoans from every neighborhood and background. As well as the members of the council who invested themselves in this process. And all of whom were committed to supporting an outcome that was fully transparent, small D democratic. And a bottom up exercise in civic engagement. I also want to acknowledge the city's economic development staff and their leader, Michael Jasso, for providing their assistance along the way. In giving background information and context as we considered and deliberated the issues and the options that we're about to describe. The participants built on the lessons of the last year. And we wanted for our recommendations to arrive at the council's own discussions in order to inform your process. Ultimately, you all are going to make the calls. And as Councilman Chenier shared a few moments ago, they're really divided between short term recommendations. And some long term opportunities that will require additional work on all of our parts. We hope that these recommendations are helpful to you as you begin your important work. And we really appreciate the time you are spending this afternoon and hearing us out. Next slide, please. As a little quick background on the process, as it was previously stated. Vice Mayor Chenier in his office started this process with my assistance in facilitating these discussions. We conducted very broad outreach as best we could, given the circumstances. To try and involve the breadth and the diversity of Sacramento's business community. As well as other stakeholders who are interested in improving our business climate. In compliance with the Brown Act requirements, council members Harris, Valenzuela. Um, Laloie, uh, and please, sir, if I mangled your name, I apologize. Uh, Guerra, as well as members of the mayor's staff, participated in parts of one or more of the sessions. And the economic development staff were invited and they did attend the meetings as well. Next slide. This slide is really a summation of the robustness of the process I just described and its participation. Uh, Vice Mayor Chenier already described the level of participation. The only comment that I would make is I, I believe, and I'm sure you would agree. It was really a demonstration of civic engagement and participation that we all can be proud of. There were so many voices from so many parts of Sacramento. And the process was set up in a way that everyone had the opportunity to be heard. Next slide. Just briefly, again, as was stated before, there were four meetings. The first three were intentionally focused on specific topics that needed their own forum. In order to ensure that their unique issues and needs were fully explored and discussed. The fourth meeting brought back everyone together to set the priorities that we're now about to explore. I do have one kind of request or rule of the road as you examine the recommendations. While they are prioritized, please don't conclude that those at the bottom of the page are not important. It's just that we had to make some hard decisions based on our state, our understanding. That needs always, no matter what or when, exceed resources. Next slide, please. Before we get into specifics, there were some overall themes and priorities. I'm not going to read them out loud, but I'm going to let you digest these for a moment. And ask you to reflect on these as a frame around which uh, to put the recommendations to follow. Next slide, please. So if you are looking for a headline, here it is. The non-negotiable priority of all of the participants in this process. Was that we collectively commit to a minimum standard that will be used as judging success. For the city in that the city is going to do its utmost to provide a clean and safe environment for everyone. Overwhelmingly, the participants in this process communicated that what they need more from the city. Is generally what is called clean and safe. In order for them not just to transact business or to bring their employees back into a safe environment. But this is also about counteracting negative perception, whether it's perceived or real. On the parts of residents, not just within the city, but throughout the region that the city of Sacramento. And in particular downtown, is a unsafe and scary environment for people to work, recreate and shop within. I understand that for some, that might be controversial to say. Uh, so, uh, and I would just respectfully request that you hear us out on this. But I can tell you from the participants and the discussions. This theme overall was the bright line. That everyone spoke to in one forum or another. Nailing success on this issue was considered by the participants as paramount. And supporting success in many of the areas to follow. Next slide, please. So when we talk about priorities, the first priority is we need people to come back downtown. We, we need the employees back. Participants agree that we also need full engagement in the arts community. As well as the entertainment community in creating the types of happenings and special events. That will draw people uh, back out of their homes, into the streets, into our parks, into our downtown. And in particular, we really need that type of acts activation and support happening downtown. There's also a a notion that the city needs to lead the way with regards to employees returning. And that the advocacy for getting the word out. To to implore employers, employees and the like, that we need you back. Because our businesses and all those that populate those businesses. Uh, need not just their bodies, but you know, their activity. In order to support of the city's revitalization. The second priority, as I mentioned, was a clearly defined baseline. That is committed to by the city to serve frankly as an accountability measure as to how it is that we all measure you all. In terms of your commitment. measure you all in terms of your commitment and delivery of performance for clean and safe efforts. Furthermore, there's a need for city resources and protocols with regards to behavioral and mental health calls. That's important around not only helping the people that might be assisted through those calls. But also turning around the perception of people that believe that it is unsafe to come back into the city. Next slide, please. Priority three is really about place making. And this was interesting because, you know, with our storied history and with all that we have invested and participated in over the past several years. We do have a sense of place in in many cases. But post COVID, this is really about reminding people and reinvention. The time and expense that as well as the brain damage that has gone into, as an example, in creating El Fresco Dining has to be maintained and supported as a permanent fixture in our neighborhoods and in downtown. Some of the the things that we did as momentary innovations in order to try and soften the blow. That's so that our our brave business people engaged in to try and just keep going on. They've got to be sustained. And so they're looking for a commitment and action to try and preserve, extend and improve those innovations that have taken place. And not automatically think that as things get better, we just dismantle and take them down. We also need to make room to support the arts community and the entertainment community in a real demonstrable and substantive way. So that they can hold the events and the pop up performances in order to bring back life and our activity to our city. I'll give you one quick personal example on that. A number of weeks ago, I happened to go up to Tower Theater, which many of you who know me know. I used to manage back in the eighties and went up there because we still make the best popcorn in Sacramento. And it just so happened that that evening there was a wonderful pop up comedy show taking place in the Trazas of the Tower Theater. Now, I understand that that was just one little event. But for the eighty to one hundred and twenty people that were there, it was amazing. And it was the sort of thing where people on a Saturday night were coming back into the into the city and participating in something where it is that not only were they entertained. But at the same time, they got to be part of a community. And so we need to we need to continue to support and advance those sorts of things. All of these activities need to be supported through a intentional and carefully thought out shop local campaign. And let's do some marketing to bring up visibility and remind people about what's great about our city. And talk about what the city itself is doing with regards to safety. And the events that people might be in interested in participating in. The next slide, please. Priority four is more about infrastructure. And it's increasing access to all businesses of certain types of supports that are commonly sought out by business owners. Businesses, business owners, while they may have come through the other side, many of them have put everything that they still had into keeping their businesses going. And right now they just need a little bit of support to get to the other side. These include resources like documents and advertisements and things like that produced in multiple languages for business owners so that that way particularly for diverse owners, business owners for whom English is not their primary language, that they understand not only what help is out there, but but how to access that help. Technical assistance for businesses and expanding opportunities for for bricks and mortar businesses to open in some of our corridors that need animation the most. And those neighborhoods that don't always have the support services that they so much deserve. Next slide, please. So we're in the home stretch, folks, and I want to leave you with a couple of questions for your consideration deliberation as you move forward in the coming weeks. One, are there things that aren't on this list? That are short term things that that can be done through this one time opportunity that are needed to support business? The second, which sounds kind of like the same question, but is a little bit different. Is what else can the city itself do? In terms of its own processes to support small businesses during reopening, to ease the path, quicken the time. Make the brain damage and paperwork less. Third, how can the city ensure that the funds that you are allocating are distributed and applied equitably to those who are most impacted? I want to add one more for you just for your consideration. After you've done all that, also consider the following. What else might you invest in? Beyond using this once in a lifetime opportunity beyond these priorities. That speaks to Sacramento's economic aspirations in the industries and entrepreneurship. That has been forecast to play an increasingly important role in our future and those for our children and grandchildren to come after us. This concludes my remarks. And again, on behalf of the participants, myself and all those who worked on this process. I wish to give the mayor and all members of the council our collective thanks for listening. We wish you well in your deliberations and we look forward to your decisions. And I'll return the microphone to Vice Mayor Chenier. Thank you all very much for your attention.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you for all the time and effort and brain power and resource that you put into this. I know you care deeply about the city. What I'd like to do is ask Mike Jasso to come forward and just talk a little bit. We we really wanted to do this collaboratively with the city so that the council over time is not seeing two different plans. So Mike, if you could talk a little bit about how this aligns with the work that your folks have been doing as well.
Sure, happy to do that. And thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, Vice Mayor. And I am joined today by Melissa Angiano, who I believe is in the room, as well as Leslie Fritsch, who was was the major point of contact in some of this work. And so as you said, Economic Development Staff, staff from the Office of Innovation and Economic Development did attend and participate in the forums. And I really want to thank you for pulling them together as well as all the participants, the other council members who attended the various meetings as we did this. And generally, what what we saw that came out of those meetings comports and complements the work we had already been doing simultaneously in terms of reaching out to the bids, the chambers. Better understand what are the kinds of things that the city can support to help reopening, particularly in this in the more immediate and short and midterm as we move forward. So we share that with the group and there were a lot of things that were identified. Some of the most obvious ones were things like continuing, enhancing, expanding the El Fresco activities, not just in the downtown, but throughout the city. So the extent that there were longer term things that were identified, we did try to kind of weigh in how they fit in the context of other kinds of activities that we've been supporting, such as the scale of Sacramento work, where we're trying to support longer term investment in tradable sectors and industries that have an opportunity to grow in Sacramento and provide career pathways and jobs that provide high, high level wages and growth opportunities. And I think that was taken, I think that was taken into account. So um, so I think everything we saw there comports. I think the two things that I would say is that we were focused as the city, as the Office of Innovation, Economic Development, particular on those, like I said, the short and midterm things for activation, reopening, and there's a lot of that, most of that in the list of other things that were identified. And then I think the only caution I would give is that we approached it from a standpoint, just looking at what should we be doing? And not specifically revolving it around the American Recovery Plan Program. Only because as we were doing this, a lot of the guidelines with respect to what could be paid for, how can it be paid for? We're still evolving, they continue to evolve. And so we didn't necessarily try to constrain ourselves just with respect to the ARP funding. Although we fully believe that many, if not most of these things that are identified and are identified through our work will be ARP eligible. But I think that's the the continuing discussion that we will have with council in the coming weeks. So with that, I I would ask Leslie and or Melissa, if you have any additional thoughts, particularly with respect to the meetings. And then I would imagine it's back to questions from council and the public.
This is Leslie Fritsch and good, good afternoon. I wanted to thank Councilmember Chenier for bringing together such a cross section of people representing the business community. And I think the forums were a good example and an important reminder of how we need to continue to stay in touch and inform our actions moving forward by hearing from those most directly impacted. So I thank you, Councilmember Chenier. And I also want to give a special shout out to Scott Scifax, who I've had the opportunity to work with from time to time and is always eloquent in his delivery and always demonstrating his commitment to our city. So thank you for your time, Scott, in leading the process. So I I don't have much to add other than we are actively involved in trying to put together an implementation plan for many of these recommendations as well as ones we've already been working on and look forward to your dialogue over the next few weeks to see how we can roll up our sleeves and work with you and put some our resources out to that business community who has been so impacted. We have a lot of ideas and look forward to the dialogue today and dialogue in the future on how we can tailor our staff resources, our steps forward to the the needs of the business community and the desires of council. So I'll leave it there and and see if Melissa might have anything else to add and and certainly available for for your input today. And and thank you, Councilmember Chenier, and certainly your top shelf staff, who is always a pleasure to work with.
Nothing additional to add. Thank you.
So, hey, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me say how I'd like to move forward on this if we can. As I said, we're looking at at potential ARP funding on the business side of this as two phase. First, the package that you have before you and I asked our economic development folks to cost it out. And somewhere between eight and nine million dollars for all of this. But what I'd like to do is bring that back as a package as soon as we can. I think respecting the the recommendations that the business community has put together will be really important. And building trust with the business community and beginning, as I said, kind of a new relationship and engagement with the business community over time is really important for us. So that would be the first piece. And then as we discuss the overall ARP and Mayor, I know you're you're putting together a framework for it. There may be other things as Scott mentioned, the last question that he added that we want to think about to really invest in our community over time. So there's public comment and then come back to the council if we can.
Let me make one comment if I may, and then you're welcome to, you can run the part of the meeting, Mr. Vice Mayor, it's all good. So first of all, this is terrific. Thank you. Thank you to Scott Scifax as well for playing the role you play so well, you know, community leader facilitator. You might think about getting your own television talk show sometime, by the way. Just a thought. In all seriousness, I do want to talk a little bit about how this folds into the ARP process because what we did with CARES, I thought worked very, very well, even though the circumstances now are different. And even some of the recommendations that the business community is making are different from the recommendations coming out of CARES. If you remember with CARES, it was direct assistance to struggling businesses. This is more business environment related as opposed to individual businesses. So it's different. But how this folds in is that on August the fifth, I'm getting the dates right here, August the fifth. We are going to agendize our first workshop on the ARP funding. In the days before August the fifth, I plan as the mayor what I've done before, and I think it really helps. Not decide anything because you decide along with me, I'm one to nine, but helps frame and organize the discussion to lay out a funding strategy and set of recommendations for the whole hundred and twelve million dollars over two years of ARP funding, of which these sets of recommendations to me are going to be an integral part of those recommendations. So I I want to have a workshop on the entire package of which these recommendations are a key highlight. And we'll have August the fifth as the first workshop and depending on how that goes to move this towards action soon thereafter on a on a following Tuesday, either the following Tuesday or at least over the next couple of weeks after August fifth. So that's sort of the plan. You can expect a letter the week prior to August the fifth. Okay. Let's hear from the public. Go ahead. Why don't you take it from here? Why don't you run this the rest of the meeting?
Sure, I would just, Madam Clark, do we have public comment on this?
Yes, I have six callers on this item. The first one is Jasmine Alope.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jasmine Alope and I am calling today on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. I want to begin by thanking council and staff for your time, thoughtfulness and consideration as formal discussions on the allocation of ARP funds begin. As the voice of business throughout the Sacramento region, we have been in constant communications with our business community and decision makers to effectively navigate through the very real impacts in the COVID nineteen pandemic. We support the swift action of Vice Mayor Chenier, council and city staff to proactively convene Sacramento's business leaders and stakeholders together to provide direct input on the needs of our business community and their economic recovery. We recognize the city of Sacramento has received the first tranche of the total one hundred and twelve million dollars of ARP funds and support the community driven priorities provided that are focused on short term and long term economic investment projects throughout the city, both in our aging corridors and urban core. In twenty twenty, the city committed roughly twenty five million dollars of CARES Act funds for small business support via forgivable loan program and technical assistance services. We applaud the city's ongoing commitment to support our businesses and further call upon the council to allocate a minimum of twenty five million dollars to support our business community as they continue to rebound from the devastating blow to their operations, workforce and livelihood. This round of economic investment should reflect a minimum and match the previous allocation of federal funding to continue addressing the needs of our business community. By doing so, the city is setting an example of supporting our businesses by investing in our urban core aging commercial corridors and community partners and organizations such as Chambers of Commerce, P Bids and others to ensure these programs and services continue to exist. We continue to work with you and city and staff as we elevate these efforts. Thank you for your time and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kyla Brandt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kyla Bryant and I'm calling today on behalf of the Capital Region Small Business Development Center, which is hosted and operated by the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, staff, for your time and consideration as these discussions on ARP funding begin. We also support the swift action of Vice Mayor Chenier, council and city staff to proactively convene Sacramento's business leaders and stakeholders together to provide direct input on the needs of our business community and their economic recovery. Particularly the importance of continuing technical assistance services as they are a critical component of our city's strategy to support, launch and grow innovative investment projects throughout both our urban core and aging commercial corridors. As we have seen and heard, the pandemic has only compounded the needs of our businesses. A couple of data points highlighting the support provided to businesses throughout the city include in twenty twenty, the Capital Region SBDC serving over four thousand clients, starting twenty two new businesses, creating four hundred and seventy jobs and fusing businesses with over eighty five million in capital. Of those clients, around nine hundred were provided technical assistance directly due to the city center's partnership with the city. Through the SBDC's one on one consulting and webinars, our team assisted businesses with a variety of topics and offered in language technical assistance services. Several businesses we serve spoke of their gratefulness to us for being a strong guide through the ever changing economic climate. Our work here is not over. With this round of federal funding, we urge the city to continue technical assistance services to our small businesses. As the Capital Region SBDC, along with our local partners, including SAC IBC and Hacker Lab, was and continues to be a critical source of support as our businesses navigate. as our businesses navigate into this new future. Thank you so much for your time. We continue to look forward to our work with you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jamison Parker.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jamison Parker with the Midtown Association. I hope you all had a great summer recess and welcome back. As you're aware, the Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district representing over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is really to focus on making Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. I wanted to just start by thanking Councilmember Chenier for bringing an incredibly diverse group of organizations and businesses and agencies together to talk about the greatest needs in our business community. Now, for almost a year and a half now, business throughout our city have been dealing with the impacts of this pandemic. And much of the direct support and programs that were stood up through the CARES Act helped keep businesses afloat in a temporary manner. You know, some of the tremendous work that was done, set up the Alfresco Program, was a perfect example of an idea that was set up quickly and effectively to ensure the restaurant communities didn't fail. In fact, in Midtown, we've had over 30 restaurants that took advantage of this Alfresco dining program and are still going strong to this day. Moving forward, Midtown's encouraged and hopes that the funds from the American Rescue Plan can be used creatively to support our business community, expanding and building upon the Alfresco Program, supporting the arts and creative economy through pop-up programming and special events, continuing direct business support, and most importantly, ensuring that we are creating a clean, safe, and welcome environment for everyone. You know, it's clear that we have much work to be done on our road to recovery. And the city has a great opportunity to be thoughtful in how we support the business community in our reopening efforts. We look forward to the continued conversation at the council's sensitive priorities for the new tranches of federal funds in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Liv Mo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I also want to echo what others, oh, sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I also want to echo what others have said and thank Jay Chenier for convening these meetings and including the arts community in these recent conversations. I am operating today in my capacity, both as the president of the Sacramento Alliance for Regional Art as well as the founding director for Verge Center for the Arts. I wanted to just mention how exciting it was to begin this meeting today, looking at the auditor's report and seeing that, once again, the arts are highlighted as a priority for many of our Sacramento's city residents and that opportunities for arts engagement, at the lowest, we're in the 60s of all districts, about 64%, and in some cases, almost 90%. So, resoundingly, we're continuing to hear from our citizens that the arts matter to them, that access to arts education and arts opportunities are important, and that these are something, things, I should say, resources that will draw them out and back into their communities, which is why we were so excited to be part of the dialogues that have been going on over the last month or two in regard to where ARPA funding will go from here. I'm also encouraged to see an acknowledgement that real support for the arts needs to be included in these planning processes. The most recent Americans for the Arts survey reflected the spend in the community beyond patronage of an arts event itself of about $30 a head. So to see the arts recommended and acknowledged as an economic driver and a real resource for the community is so, so validating and important. We're hoping that you will consider an allocation to the arts community of $15 million over two years to help us recover and so that we don't lose any of our really essential organizations or colleagues to the bakeries of what's happened over the last 18 months. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Richard Falcone.
Thank you, everyone. Richard Falcone, Teatro Nahuatl. I wanted to thank you especially for inviting me to the discussion for the meetings that were had regarding this subject of business priorities for funding. And I very much, like Liv, want to echo how exciting it is to see that, again, arts are high on the priority list of what our communities are saying is vital, especially as we start to reopen and grow our businesses. I'm especially excited by the partnerships that I am growing within the Latino community and especially within the downtown areas as we try to revitalize a high percentage, that high percentage of population here within Sacramento and providing for them quality arts programming to help grow not only those Latino businesses so impacted by COVID, but also all businesses that could benefit by some of that funding. And with that, with that extended, I want to make sure that we are taking into consideration the populations in the outer districts, District 2, District 7, District 8. Many of those districts, their communities, their businesses can also benefit from arts pop-ups, arts festivals. And so I want to make sure that we are making sure that we include and are equitable in our funding for all districts and all businesses with arts programming in Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is from a phone number. Last four digits is 8922. To unmute, press star 6.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. And this is David Nelson. I'm the Director of Policy for the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce. And I'd just like to thank you for your continuing unwavering support for the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative, the SAC IEDC, through 3.7 million CARES Act contract that was funded, which included 15 organizations, all focused on one collective goal, which was to assist small businesses in our city's aging corridors with a laser focus on lifting up our minority small business owners. By pairing with the four ethnic chambers of commerce in the area with the nine P-bids, surveying our underserved geographical areas, Hacker Labs, and the Metro Chamber, the SAC IEDC led the recovery needs for our minority small business owners by providing technical assistance to over 1,500 small businesses within the city, primarily in low to moderate income zip codes, distributing nearly 500 temperature scanners to those businesses most heavily hit by the pandemic, producing webinars on critical topics of workforce for COVID, and conducted over 3,600 direct one-on-one consulting hours assisting small business owners, many of whom didn't speak English. And we helped them navigate the pandemic with in-language culturally appropriate support. Our comprehensive approach allowed the 15-partner organizations to be the most efficient and effective when they can be when continuing to help our minority small businesses recover. But our work is not done, and in fact, is only beginning as these small businesses, as we have heard, still need tremendous support in the business environment and expertise to help them navigate what is next for their businesses. The SAC IEDC respectfully requests $2 million per year over the next three years to support this effort. And we are making so much progress in creating pathways into these minority-owned small businesses in ways we've never been able to do.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Stevenson.
Hi, I'm Michael Stevenson. I'm the producing artistic director at Capital Stage. And I want to echo some of my partner's comments. Thank you so much for your leadership and the critical pandemic funding you provided to arts and cultural organizations in Sacramento. We would not have survived without this critical support. I think, as you all know, we're one of the hardest-hit sectors and will be one of the last to recover. I just wanted to reframe our understanding. The arts organizations and cultural institutions, they're not only essential for creative and cultural recovery of our city, but they're businesses that bring in millions of dollars and draw people back. The major performing arts organizations brought in over $20 million in payroll last year and $255 million capital investments from 2003 to 2020. And I'm sure that's much larger now with all the renovations going on. We're a critical part of the community, and we're requesting $15 million from the American Rescue Plan over two years to help us emerge from the devastation of the pandemic. We don't know when our audiences are coming back and how long it will take, but we know that we're a critical part of the community, and we look forward to welcoming people back. Thank you again for your support, especially with the swift action of the CARES resources. It was life-saving. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Marie Acosta.
Hello? Can I be heard? I can't tell.
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers. And Councilmember Jay Chenier, it's always a pleasure to hear what council members are doing on behalf of our communities, particularly when it comes to art and culture from some of our very specific communities like the Latino/Latinx community. As a member of the Steering Committee of the Latino Economic Council, I wanted to express how gratifying it is to see that we are speaking with one voice about the critical economy of Sacramento as artists, as business members, as healthcare workers, as educators, and echo what my good friend Liv Mo and our good friends who have spoken on behalf of the arts have stated. I wanted to talk about how, when our beautiful weather is not as beautiful as it often is, to what happens to the arts when we go indoors. We love doing our outdoor festivals, and our Day of the Dead is one of the most popular here in Sacramento. At the same time, when we go to the Guild Theater and produce our theater productions, and we have our exhibitions at our center on 2700 Front Street, like Liv's exhibitions at the Verge, we bring people to those areas that subsequently eat and shop in the business districts that we are near. So I just want to echo what others have said about the forward-looking proposals and considerations that you're making today and in the future on behalf of our wonderful city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure. First off, I just want to commend each and every one of you for the tremendous work you've all done through this pandemic. As Executive Director of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership here in Sacramento, I got to tell you, we would not have been able to provide the assistance that we were able to provide to our small businesses on Del Paso Boulevard without the swift action of the City Council and, more importantly, the acknowledgement that the body of the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative has the capacity and understands what's happening on the ground in our areas to help facilitate providing those resources. Councilmember Chenier, thank you so much. Got a chance to participate in two of the working groups. Del Paso Boulevard is ripe for things like pop-up events, place-making, facade improvements, and ultimately, more housing. I think this next round of funding gives us an opportunity to do that. And I'm extremely pleased to see this, this language used in this conversation. So I'm merging the council tonight to please take these recommendations forward. I'd love to see some place-making and really some, a significant amount of facade improvement dollars coming to Del Paso Boulevard. We've got businesses who have weathered a storm. Looks like they're going to continue to weather this storm. And there's a few more things we can do to help make sure the environment on Del Paso Boulevard is really the best it can be for businesses who are here now and who will be coming here in the future. But again, thank you all so much for the hard work that you've been doing. And we here on Del Paso Boulevard are here to support you all every step of the way moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Frank Louie. Next speaker is Frank Louie.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Frank Louie. I'm Executive Director for the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We had a tremendous opportunity to use the American Rescue Funds to positively impact our aging core. Stockton Boulevard has the most culturally diverse ethnic businesses in our region and with many of them being impacted prior to the pandemic in early 2020. As the council discusses investments for businesses, we ask that they would be sensitive to the business core's needs outside of the central city. Even prior to the onset of the pandemic, Stockton Boulevard worked diligently with city staff, businesses, and the community to address some of the social illness we experience, such as the drugs, prostitution, and crime, which have hindered economic vibrancy. Investments in workforce housing, folks making a minimum wage, housing stocks in very short supply. Collaborating with SMUD on a regional innovation center with focus on providing technology and innovation to create a pathway for businesses to have less dependence on fossil fuel and being able to convert to electric, only if it's economically feasible and available. Continuing funding of SAC IEDC that has allowed us to work smarter, not harder, to continue helping our small businesses. We've been able to leverage the strengths of this collaborative efforts to lift all boats. In closing, I applaud the ongoing efforts of the mayor, vice mayor, and council at looking through the equity lens to ensure that nobody is left behind. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Bay Mary.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Bay Mary, and I'm a developer with mixed-use properties in Midtown, Downtown, and R Street. And many thanks to Vice Mayor Chenier, the entire economic development team, and Scott Scifax. Thank you for caring about our city. I appreciate having been invited to participate in the recent workshops regarding the priorities of the business community and urge the council to utilize rescue funds and budgetary decisions consistent with our group's conclusions. Please emphasize clean and safe solutions, both in the short term and long term throughout the city. Please emphasize making our city as welcoming and clean of an environment as possible. Please emphasize place-making and events that help build our community and bring folks together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Liz Lauren Williams.
Good afternoon and welcome back, Mayor and members of the council. Liz Lauren Williams calling on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership. As the destination for tourism, the arts, a vibrant food and entertainment scene, and the region's employment center, the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic and mandated shutdowns have significantly impacted Sacramento's urban core as the vast majority of employees remain out of the office. By the numbers, downtown Sacramento is an economic and employment multiplier for Sacramento, providing investment, tax revenue, and other added fiscal benefits. Driving nearly half of the city's property in TOT tax prior to the pandemic and employing nearly 40% of the city's workforce, it's crucial we spark our economic engine again. We have numerous challenges ahead of us. However, a strong downtown is critical to provide the necessary public services for Sacramento's residents and businesses. Sacramento continues to see private investment in housing, hotels, and entertainment destinations. The city has a unique opportunity to leverage additional public resources with this private investment to realize lasting benefits. Benefits such as improvements to public spaces can promote healthier living environments through increasing outdoor recreation and socialization, including enhanced pedestrian experience through facade and other physical improvement projects. We urge you to continue to nurture our businesses, cultural amenities, and creative opportunities downtown while also providing a clean, safe, and welcoming experience for training workforce and visitors. Let us be innovative as a city and leverage back-to-work incentives and job programs to reduce unemployment and cultivate a return-to-office culture and enjoyment of Sacramento. As you consider how to apply federal relief, investment in downtown has the long-term potential to support the ongoing recovery and health of our city and region. With support, its unique contributions to our local economy, identity, resilience will continue to provide value as we transition from survival to revival. We look forward to partnering with you to see this through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more commenters, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to turn to council comments. So Councilmember Gera, then Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Ballantyne.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I want to thank you and your city staff for, and the team for this amazing work. And also for our Economic Development Department and Mr. Scott Scifax here for those great workshops. I think it was a huge example of great civic engagement, sitting in those workshops and just listening and seeing the dynamics unfold. With the difficulty of a virtual format, I mean, the fact that we were able to produce something like this is amazing. So a lot of kudos to you, Vice Mayor Chenier, in this effort and all those who took part in putting this together, because it was a huge undertaking. You know, my staff participated as well in the different breakout groups to get a better sense of all of the conversation points throughout the city. And interestingly enough, you know, one thing is clear. Without a strong central city, you know, a city can't function. But one thing that was highlighted that we have heard from the commercial corridor even before the pandemic, and I think, you know, Mr. Louie alluded to this, is that clean and safe is a critical aspect that the city must focus on. is that clean and safe uh is a critical aspect that the city must focus on. Being able to put the resources in to uh give, uh, to immediately take away the perception, but not only that, but uh, but address the safetiness and making feel, people feel comfortable to come and uh frequent our, our businesses throughout the city and the commercial corridors is essential. I mean, that is a fundamental equity uh, uh, action that we need to take. And, and if the pandemic brought that up and helped highlight that of something that's been challenging with the corridors, that's a very positive uh, uh, positive thing. Uh, as basic needs as trash cans, and I, I know we started before the dissolution of the Regional Solid Waste Authority, trying to figure out a trash can pro- uh, 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 program. But something as basic as trash cans and being able to address those issues is something that came out in these conversations about. What are, what are we doing as a city to make people comfortable to uh leave their community and go to a different place? Uh, to support their ne- their neighboring commercial corridors. I think, um, some of the things I want to uplift in the conversations that we had um, it was uh the key issue of having uh language for uh, for the business owners who English is not their primary language. And we saw that through our COVID dollars. We had some great successes. My win with C Pals and the Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce and the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce worked diligently to address that early on. When we didn't do that, we saw that participation in some of these, the resources that we were putting out uh weren't being taken advantage equitably. So I think that one thing that I felt very happy to see and listen to come out of this was the acknowledgement um that the diversity of our businesses means that we also have to address the language piece along with trusted messengers and making sure that the city is identifying that point. Uh, and particularly in the commercial corridors. Uh, one thing that the downtown area has been successful in, in the past, and, and we saw here was that to attract people, we want to create uh positive environments, open uh, open events, farmers' markets, uh festivals outside. Well, it's almost been difficult and uh, and sometimes cost prohibitive for the commercial corridors to do that. Uh, if you talk about the, the Ted Festival and Lunar Flower Fest to close down Stockton Boulevard, it extremely cost prohibitive. In many years, they've had to cancel. The Taco Festival on Del Paso Boulevard, very expensive to do. And also the uh, the uh, the Back to the Boulevard on Fr- on Fruit Ridge Boulevard. Um, you know, those uh, uh, on Franklin Boulevard, those have been issues that have been uh, those are the events that, that bring and attract people to the local businesses so that uh, not just the people around the corridor uh support those businesses, but it draws other clientele to keep those businesses going. So seeing how the city can better finance those and help support those corridors, uh, because those businesses are, are trying to work every day, day and day just to keep their doors open and to add on top of it permits and fees. Uh, make it cost prohibitive to, to take advantage of that. So I, I want to thank, you know, Councilmember Chenier for those points. Uh, uh, and I think we should be moving forward and, and addressing the short-term ones that we can do. A couple of points, uh, one, the One Stop Job Center uh on Stockton Boulevard with Aggie Square. I, I think that's a critical one that we need to do, not just because of Aggie Square, but the fact is that within a couple of miles, we have four other health uh, uh, institutions, Kaiser, Dignity, um, and Sutter, all within that area that could help uh, help provide job opportunities for many folks. Not only that, but support those corridors. We know that the Latino Economic Council wants another job center also to create an opportunity center down on, on Franklin Boulevard. I think those job centers and creating places for helping businesses start up uh is something that um, the, that we need to start formulating as a city as a priority. And we've done that with Skill Up. Uh, but this is, this ARP funding gives us that opportunity to jumpstart that. It's one-time money that helps us ignite that so that we can keep uh things moving forward. So I, first, I just again, wanted to thank all the economic development staff, to you, Vice Mayor Chenier, for this, and also all the participants. Uh, you know, I want to recognize Tina Reynolds brought a lot of energy to our workshop and one of them that we did and appreciate that. Um, and uh, and most importantly, all the businesses who were able to take advantage of it. So, uh, finally, I think direction-wise, I, again, I would support making sure that we target those funding um allocations. Uh, also to, uh, as we heard from the EI Inclusive Economic Development Council uh on those commercial corridors uh where clean and safe issues have been a longtime challenge uh to be able to change that. Uh, supporting code enforcement on those efforts. Right now, we don't have actually the support for code enforcement to assist worker, uh, the businesses for, for these issues and, and to even get these things going. So, um, the, definitely the, 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 uh, the support for the commercial corridors is critical. Uh, yes, downtown is important, but we can't forget that, that the other part of our city is all of those commercial corridors that have been affected too. So thank you, uh, Vice Mayor, and excited about this, uh, how we move forward with this proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate it. Uh, you know, these workshops were informative. Uh, I participated in two. I was not surprised by the comments that I heard uh at all i- in the workshops. Thank you to you and Scott for putting this together and your staff. You know, um, I want to drill down a little more focused on details here. For me, one of the key priorities I have for the ARP funds is to make the businesses whole downtown that were vandalized during the George Floyd uh protestation. You know, we, we have a core that is boarded up with Plowwick. That does nobody any good, and it would be a very high priority for me to make those businesses whole if they used insurance funds to uh replace their glass to make them whole. But to make sure that our downtown core is inviting and safe, you can't have a bunch of boarded up businesses. It just makes no sense. In terms of uh clean and safe, there's that piece, but there's also the impacts of homelessness, and we can't look away from that. Of course, that's a much bigger discussion that we'll talk about in the siting plan and allocation of a tremendous amount of funds to create more opportunities for the homeless to be safe themselves. But to create the safety for our business community, we can't look away from the impacts of homelessness. They are big and deep. And uh, you know, quite frankly, we have to invest a lot of money in cleaning up our city. One of the biggest complaints I get from my constituents is that our city looks really bad. We know why it's going on, and uh we have to address this space forward. I think the mayor has a, a pretty solid plan in the making uh to help us move along in, in that regard. Another thing that was brought up is shopping local. You know, it's as simple as we can keep our do- our dollars in Sacramento or we can send them to Amazon, which translates into sending Jeff Bezos into space. So do you want to create a livelihood for our shop owners and our vendors and our restaurateurs? Uh, you know what? I would encourage everybody to work with their constituents to shop local. And I, I want to make a call out to Cecily Hastings, who in the very outset of the pandemic started a shop local campaign in East Sacramento, which I think materially helped a lot of our business owners there. You know, we shop with our dollars, just, just like the city uses the budget to, to emphasize their priorities. Our constituents have to do the same thing. They have to keep their dollars local if we're really going to support our businesses. I appreciate what Eric said. Um, oh, you know, I'd also like to, to point out that the damage from, from uh the protests over George Floyd weren't, were not only in downtown. They reached as far as North Gate. And those businesses need, need to be made whole as well. I, I appreciate that the corridors uh need a lot of attention. I agree with Councilmember Gera in that regard. All the rest of the recommendations, Jay, from uh, you know, your project here, I think are very valuable. They're, they're necessary. They're needed. We have a great opportunity with ARP funds to affect a lot of very positive change, although it's one-time money. Uh, you know, from the monies from the state as well as the federal government. We have opportunities here to make very substantial changes to support our business community. And I suggest that we take all of them, and I look forward to those discussions, starting on August fifth, as the mayor said. Because, uh, you know, as we've noted many times at council, we vote with our budget allocations. We vote with the money that we have to spend on how we want to improve our city. So those are a couple of specific recommendations that I would make, but of course, everything that was brought forward by this exercise, I think is, is all very valuable. So, uh, Vice Mayor, thank you very much for your efforts and to your staff. Uh, I, I enjoyed the process. Thanks again.
Thanks, Jeff. And, and funds for the boarded up buildings are included in the detail in the recommendations. So. Good. Okay, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, and then Loloey, and then Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I was actually at the pop-up. That's Mr. Sky, Mr. Scifax noted at Tower Theater. Um, it was put on by this company called Don't Tell Comedy, and it was pretty awesome. And, you know, my dream, um, as we come out of this pandemic is that we really leave space for that sort of creativity, both like big scale and small scale, and really think about how we um create resources for different types of ideas, for different unique experiences all over um the downtown as well as the rest of the city. So for me, thinking about the process moving forward, um, how do we really solicit that sort of input from like the smaller groups who, um, you know, not to say, Vice Mayor, you did an amazing job with these workshops and the staff did a great job, and Mr. Scifax was an amazing facilitator, but there is this, I'm still hearing from folks who, who didn't know that those happened or have ideas um that maybe they want to be put into the hopper before we make any sort of final decisions on this funding. So one thing that I would like to request, um, since I'm hearing August fifth would be a workshop date for us is to maybe have like a city email or some point of contact that we could put out. Maybe there's a little social media graphic. If you have other ideas, send it here, um, just to make sure we fully captured everything before we start moving forward on, on spending money. That would be one request uh for, for staff as we move towards that August fifth workshop. Um, the second thing that I want to ask staff about or um to follow up on is about business support, a different kind of business support. You know, a lot of businesses who manage to stay open really still need our help, not just through activations and bringing customers back, but through help with back rent and renegotiating lease agreements um and, and situations that they find themselves in where some of them are looking at tens of thousands of dollars of money that they're not going to be able to pay back anytime soon. And they're starting to get really stressed as the eviction moratorium for commercial tenants is getting ready to expire on September thirtieth. And I want to come in because our staff, what we'll hear at five o'clock on the agenda is a proactive measure that they're putting forward for city tenants, city business tenants, to talk about rent forgiveness and renegotiating leases and really making sure that they can stay because we don't want to lose those diverse businesses. Um, not just because we're losing that really important asset to our communities and economy, but also because those storefronts are likely going to stay vacant for a while if they close, and that, and that hurts all of us. So I'd really like staff to also think about how we can bring forward some assistance for folks, um, business tenants that might be having trouble potentially facing eviction so that we can really do something before the eviction moratorium experience expires in September and think about what that can look like. Um, that's fair to property owners, but also realistic um for folks who are still trying to recover from a really, really hard um year. And then finally, I would just say that I really think one of the perspectives that's missing um in this conversation right now is the workers. Um, you know, the, not just the folks who've been working at our businesses and kind of keeping us afloat from the janitors to the, to the res- restaurant staff, to um all the folks that have been helping keep our city going during this really tough time, but also the office workers who are working from home that we really hope will come back to offices as well as the folks who are not in the workforce right now. And I really want to make sure that those thoughts and, and feedback are heard as well and incorporated since that's sort of the other side of the, of the coin um to some of the business recommendations. So, um, I'm really excited to announce that we partnered with the Sacramento Central Labor Council on a worker listening series um that we have two um so far, and we're open to doing more if folks want to collaborate on other sessions. But this will be on August first and August third. We put the information up on our social media. Um, we'd happily give more people information to help publicize, but we really want to hear from the workers as well um about barriers they might be experiencing, needs that they have. So we really make sure we're um thinking holistically about our economic recovery. So that's it, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Thanks. Uh, Councilmember Loloey.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, um, I think I had to write some of these things down because normally I just have one-liners, but regarding this, I figured there's, it's going to be a little bit um long-winded, but I, I try to go through it extremely fast. Um, Vice Mayor, I, I, I think that, that this priority list is a great starting point for discussion around neighborhood business and safety and security as it relates to businesses and recovery. Um, anyone that knows me and my record um, uh, speaks for itself, I am one hundred percent for the business community, uh, in particular, the, the small family-owned uh businesses that have been affected, especially the ones that have been affected uh by this pandemic. Um, as far as, you know, um downtown, I, and I, and I've heard the word downtown repeatedly today as we're discussing this. Um, our downtown i- i- is a destination point. And the fact remains that, and, and I, I was, I had the honor of being in one of your sessions as well. The, the number one complaint that I would hear from the downtown business owners was cleanliness and safety. Um, these are some of the things that I think as um, as see, as representative of, of our district, we shouldn't be waiting for an ARP to create those basic needs uh of our city to keep it clean and safe. Um, I've had a Business Town Hall um with stakeholders in my district, District Two, to discuss needs and concern and priorities as it relates to pandemic recovery. And so I just want to add some things that were not covered in the presentation, particularly as it relates to the needs of businesses in districts like District Two. We talk a lot uh in this uh city about equity disparities and economic and racial justice. This money needs to be deployed, um, deployed equitability and smart. It needs to be approached like an investment this time around and not just be a mad dash to get in and out the door like was the case with last round of pandemic stimulus. Um, I don't want to look back one or two years from now and have nothing or little to show for as as um has often been the case in my district. And we're still waiting for detailed impact reports from our other last round of stimulus. We also owe it to our constituents to be crystal clear and transparent on what are, what we are allocating to stabilize and backfill our operating and general fund budget because there's a lot of chatter out there about these APR, ARP uh, uh, funds. We have the uh flexibility to be strategic in deploying ARP funds that extend, extend beyond basic budget stabilization. Um, I want there to be a direct benefit that my constituents will benefit from and clearly understand how they are benefiting right and directly or indirectly. I understand that this is a stimulus dollar that we will, we are talking about, but we have the opportunity to foster and see new um, uh, trajectory of equitable, inclusive economic growth in districts such as District Two. District Two comprised of most economically distressed neighborhoods in the city. The neighborhood business in District Two community have been hit extremely hard by the pandemic. The pandemic exacerbated many longstanding issues in my district and in other cases exposed existing weaknesses uh, uh, and vulnerabilities. I'm not only referencing, referencing uh, um, businesses, but my business corridor, my commercial corridors have been impacted significantly. The pandemic has been destabilizing effects on commercial quarters in District Two, and this is impacting our social and economic um assets. I can tell you District Two is not the only district. Uh, increased storefront vacancies not only um, uh, equates to economic hardship for property owners, businesses, and local government, but they also affect the surrounding communities. With closed businesses come empty storefronts along corridors which turn into blight storefronts, like, it's like storefronts in my district. Blight storefronts uh result to health and safety concerns. And we had our, our fair share even before the pandemic. Research has found, my goodness, I wasn't kidding when I don't know that much during these um council meetings. Maybe I would need to practice it more often. Research has found that vacant properties are linked to reduced property values, increased risk of fires, elevated crime rate, and negative impacts on health through injury, the buildup of trash, and attraction of rodents. I have the code enforcement data to prove it in my district. I have the fire department data to prove it in my district. I have the police department data to prove it in my district. I have the Del Paso Boulevard um security, private security data to provide it in, in my district. And I hate to say it, but the cannabis industry isn't the answer to all our problems in District Two. To this environmental and economic injustice despite why, despite what many continue to holler in the name of equity and justice. ARP investment in District 2 is to boost strategies that are already underway. We need to ensure positive economic spillover from projects that are currently underway in, in my district and districts like mine. We need to build a momentum and create a new momentum that we haven't seen in decades. And convert it to support the Marysville Boulevard business corridor first and foremost. And Del Paso Boulevard business, business quarters secondary. We've got to focus more on blight commercial properties. Public owned and private owned in the hopes of bringing mid-skilled, family-sustained jobs back to this promising part of the city. We've got to focus more on safety and security of our businesses and our constituents that we depend on to. Patronize, patronize our neighborhood businesses. I'd like to see a startup fund to support diverse entrepreneurs in my district. We must execute strategic investment. We must put the right team in place to get District 2 back on the road to recovery. We must set goals to track our results. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I, again, I want to emphasize what we presented today is a starting point, not an ending point. We, with CARES, we put $25 million into the business community. I hope we can do the same thing. But being respectful to what we've heard. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Councilmember Chenier. I will keep this short because I know we have a meeting 45 minutes. Really just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Vice Mayor Chenier, for leading this very important work. I know it was a heavy lift. So also want to give a shout out to your staff for, for all the great work that they did to get to this moment. To provide these recommendations. Also want to give a shout out to Scott. Thank you so much for facilitating and, and presenting today. So yeah, I just have a few comments and just want to uplift a few priorities that are aligned in terms of. What I've been hearing in the district and what I too will be pushing when we are talking about allocating dollars. Definitely the language access and resources support. Really thrilled to see that that was one of the main priorities coming out. I think Councilmember Garrett mentioned the Hispanic Chamber and also my and a few of our Asian CBOs, our Asian American CBOs. That was really on the forefront, on the ground, helping to translate and work with our small business owners. So really great to see that. Activation of spaces, I think that's, that's something that no one can argue with. We know that if we're able to activate spaces, they're safer, right? And there's families that come out. So I think it's really great to see that. I do want to just, and like you said, Councilmember Chenier, this is definitely just a starting point. But I definitely do want to echo Councilmember Valenzuela. She makes some really good points about rethinking how new supports for a business could look like. And in particular. I have had two small business owners reach out to me regarding just difficulty covering, covering rent. In, in commercial buildings, right? And so maybe that's just something that we could, we can think through a little bit more. I think I love the idea of, not I think, I know, I love the idea of a citywide campaign to buy local. But what I'm worried about is that, you know, folks can't buy local if, if our local businesses can't stay in Sacramento. So I think if we can figure out ways to also. You know, support some of our small minority-owned businesses or businesses that have reached out to me regarding that in particular because. Rent is pretty high for commercial buildings. And so if we can think through that a little bit, that would be great. But. Overall, I think this is really great and I just want to commend you for your hard work and, and your leadership on leading this. This work as we move forward on the conversation about the American Rescue Plan. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, I, I want to thank Scott for all the work he did. The Economic Development Department, Mike Jasson and all his folks, Wesley, we couldn't have done this without you. And, and my staff, Allison, Claudia and the rest did a great job, worked really hard on this. It's a starting point. I, I hope we can respect the recommendations of the business group and move on. As we said, we did 25 million in CARES. I hope we can do at least 25 million here overall. But I would ask, just as direction for Economic Development Department to kind of put a fine tuning to, to the. Cost estimates of these recommendations so that when we get to it, the council has good information and can be data-driven on this like everything else. And then, you know, look forward to the conversation about all the suggestions that you, you all have made. I think they're all important. And we, we really need to think long-term about how we support this community and support the business community. Because we need jobs. We need high-paying jobs for everyone in Sacramento. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you and, and with this item. With one, one thing that I'd love to do when we get to the ARP. We've talked about understanding the lessons learned from the CARES program and what we've done there. So I hope when we start the conversation about the broader ARP. We can have a section on lessons learned and start there. So we, we know how we did and, and what we're doing.
Absolutely. That'll be a fundamental part, not just for the business investment, but for.
Absolute, all of it.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity coming up and I think on a major piece of. Of that opportunity, you've set the stage really well here today. So thank you. Thank you again. All right, that concludes our meeting. We do have a closed session. And so. I know that I have a idea or question that I want to raise. But I'm going to wait until the afternoon meeting gets done so we can go right into closed session. I'd ask other members to consider doing the same. Do, do we have our council ideas or question, not council, we have members of the public that want to testify.
I have two callers for matters not on the agenda. The first.
Let's do that and then we're going to go right into closed session because we have an important closed session and I want to see if we can get. Started at five o'clock with the afternoon meeting. Okay?
The first is Sophia Neal.
Hi, everybody. I'm an artist slash resident of Sacramento and I just want to say that Sacramento did a great job during the pandemic. Like it was just so amazing the support, like applying for grants. The Hacker Lab had like a wonderful program and then at the end there was a stifling. It made me believe in myself as an artist. It made me want to contribute more. But I live on our street. And the only problem on our street is not enough color. And I want to do something to change that. Like it's like really bad. You know, if I want to see like artwork of color, I have to go to San Francisco or maybe Oakland, but this street could use it. You know, it really could. And that's all I'm going to say.
Very good. Thank you. Next?
Thank you. Our next caller is from a phone number, last four digits, nine two one one. Please hit star six to unmute. Caller from nine two one one, it's your turn to speak.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis and I, I wanted to first say thank you to Mayor Steinberg. I called his office because. I didn't understand how to get in and a lady named Jennifer, that's the type of people you should have on the payroll at City Hall. She told me exactly what number to call, what the number was to get in, what, what to push. So that's outstanding work out of the mayor's office and I only made one call, Mayor, and that was to your office and I got clarity. The other thing is, as I listened to everything that was said tonight. I'm more determined and grateful to the city because those graphs that you're showing us. I'm, I'm a master at reading graphs and determining if they've been skewed, especially when it comes to. Black people in terms of every department and position there, there's always a, they're using terms like delta now and. And we need more analysis if it's blacks that are going down. Or we need to study the other races and I'm starting to notice that all the other races have representation at City Hall. When they talk. When I study them, there's different nationalities. I went to Grant High School, so I, I've been around all kinds of cultures. And different nationalities and I speak different languages. So I'm concerned about those graphs. It's no question that there's a bias down there regarding blacks and I'm going to keep pushing on. Because this is something that has to be dealt with and I, I thank you for those graphs. They're very helpful to what I'm fighting for. And I would like to end by saying thank you to Del Paso Heights. They kept us alive and well during this pandemic. And the millennials and a lot of women patronized us and kept us alive. So thank you and I will be pushing forward on our agenda, which is not it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to do a shout out to Jennifer Vallejo in my office who assisted Mr. Lambert in getting online.
That was Jennifer Vallejo, not from my office, Mr. Davis, although, and so thank you to the city clerk and her team. But we're all one team here at City Hall, so we'll, we'll take the compliment as well. Thank you. Very good. Members, let's go right into the closed session. You have a link for the closed session. And then to the members of the public, we're going to try to start at five o'clock, but we may be a few minutes late. So. There's nothing more to come before the city council. We are, the afternoon meeting is adjourned. Thank you.